I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, November 3rd, 7:02 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for Dock Stream LLC, case number 2021-16, 116 Davis Street. Date of the application is September 23rd, 2021. The following was posted in the Town Hall and it was also published in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette and it reads as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. At 7:00 PM, Dock Stream is requesting a special permit in an industrial-zoned district pursuant to the MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Appendix A, Schedule of Use Regulations, Subsection A, agricultural, to be considered a non-exempt farm on less than five acres, which is permitted within an industrial zone by special permit. The property is located at 116 Davis Street, assessors map 191, parcel one. A copy of the application may be viewed in the community development office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated." Tonight, we have Mr. Bombarra's president, present, Mr. Forgett, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and myself, and we have an unexcused absence for Mr. Holland. And just wanted to acknowledge that we, one of our associate members passed away recently and Mr. Tosino. And is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, my name's Joe Cassali. I'm a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth. I hold offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. With me tonight is Peter Sabian. Peter is the owner, or one of the owners, who will be here to answer any operational questions. Julie Bartlett is our architect, and we also have Jerry Alba, who is our mechanical engineer, considering the use if there are specific mechanical questions. But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just go through a quick PowerPoint presentation.
Yep, please do.
Is that okay? Do you want me to?
Can everybody see it all right?
Yeah, I can see it. I'm good.
So, in terms of where we are in the community, northeast, Main Street, Hartford Ave., 146, and then Davis Street, Route 16, and specifically, that's the subject parcel, map 191, lot one. It's just shy of about an acre and a half. When we look closer at the piece, there's an existing 12,600-square-foot building. It's a two-story steel structure, commercial, my understanding, once used as a former transmission shop, an auto repair shop. When you look at the building envelope, you'll see that there is an existing non-conforming condition. That southernmost corner, or that front corner, is over the line, or the building's set back by about seven, seven-and-a-half feet. We're not proposing any enlargement. We're actually proposing a small addition be demolished, and I'll get into that in the middle. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, the parcel currently has an existing well. This is a private well. We would need to, if we receive approvals from the local town, go through and get a public well for our specific use, under 70 gallons per day. The building's also serviced by an existing leach field. We have a propane tank that's out there in our pre-application meeting, in our TRC meeting. We've been in contact with the fire chief and asked us to protect those embalids, which you'll see on subsequent plans, and that's the smaller pertinence that's going to be removed. That existing shed is going to be removed and disposed of. And the proposal is to repurpose that existing building into the cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility. As part of this, the owner is going to keep that red corner, that fenced-in area, as there, I believe they have it rented out to a fence company. But in terms of the repurposing, when you look at the floor plan, that is, will be the secure delivery with the security office there. We have restrooms, obviously, for employees. Those two rooms are going to be vegetation rooms. You move into flowering rooms. We also have an area to trim some of the product. There's our irrigation room, utility closet, and then some office and storage. Now, upstairs, most of it is open below, but the mezzanine, we have what we call a mother room that has some of the key plants in there. You have a cloning room, and then you get into some drying rooms. Different in terms of manufacturing, extraction, some preparation, packaging, and then ultimately security in terms of the vault, and then a small break room. We are planning on some infill around the perimeter of the building, specifically these windows. We want to remove them and infill them with, you know, matching cladding. Same with the overhead door. That's going to be where the deliveries would be. We want that to be removed and replaced with more of a roller-type shutter-type door. And that is also going to be removed, that door, and infilled. And even on the front side of the building, we're going to be removing and infilling some of those windows and demolishing that vestibule, and that's that back shed we talked about that's going to be removed. And then in the rear, we just want to have a new egress with a little bit of a facade. So, in terms of parking, what is required by your code is 10 spaces. We're proposing 16, one of them being handicap accessible. We're planning on crack filling and sealing most of that parking lot. There is an area that just came up that is currently not paved, that we want to pave so we can make one of those spaces ADA accessible in conformance with the ADA Act. And also, that target that just came up is going to be a heavy-duty slab that's going to be fenced in for our secure dumpster enclosure area. So even with the small addition from this parking, we'll still have a small reduction in impervious areas because of the demolition of that small structure there. So about 194 square feet of reduction. Not much, but nonetheless, no increase in impervious areas. Again, that's the fenced-in delivery area, and then also the waste dumpster and storage, because the waste, too, we want that to be in a secure facility. The well location, we understand that we still have to move through that process for this to be a public well. And then we get into some of the utilities for our specific use. We need significant fire protection here, so we've got two 30,000-gallon cisterns and a fire pump house that's going to lead six-inch fire protection right into the building. We've got different mechanical pertinences, like a makeup air unit. We have heat pumps. We also have about 22 air condensing units, and with the understanding that this needs to, is going to lead to upgrades in that septic field. So, again, Mr. Chairman, I know that was a lot, but we're here for you specifically tonight for that special permit, not special use, that special permit for a non-exempt farm, less than five acres. We are scheduled, if we have a positive decision tonight, to be before the Planning Board for Site Plan Review back in November, and then obviously make our steps through the Health Agent, DEP, for the well service, Building Department, and so forth. But I am happy to answer questions of you or members of the board, as will the owner, the architect, or the mechanical engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any board members that have any questions for the applicant?
I do, actually.
Go ahead, Mike.
Looking through your notes on your proposal, you have shift change, what's the planned hours?
Yeah, so hours of operation are scheduled to be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I've seen the shift change note, so I'm just curious as to what that was.
So, some of them will be working the, like, the ending four or 10 to 6?
Yeah. If we have a long day, need to put in a few more hours.
But it's not a, we're not running like a typical.
Yeah, I was just asking if you think we have some residential houses that are close by that. That's why I asked that question. And under utilities, you said it uses a significant volume of water, but during your presentation, you said 70 gallons a day?
70 gallons a minute.
Oh, 70 gallons a minute.
That's going to be the threshold that we would be filing under. It'll be, you know, the thresholds will vary from that 10,000 gallons per day to the 70 gallons per minute, so we'll be filing that. Do we, from the other store, do we have an approximate water usage?
Yes, if you give you a few minutes, I can do a quick calculation.
Yeah, yeah, very great.
And I just have one other question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Just had to get done with that. Well, I can do it while I was looking that up. What impact will that have to the?
Mike, can you speak up, please? I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was asking how much water that they would be using a day, so he's looking that up for me. And so my follow-up question was, what impact would that potentially have on neighboring wells?
We'll be using approximately 800 gallons a week of water.
Oh, a week? Correct.
Which is?
He said 70 gallons a minute, and then 10,000 gallons.
That's the threshold for the permit. Yeah, we have to file for it. So, minimal amount in terms of 800 gallons per week, a typical four-bedroom, single-family home would have about 450 gallons per day.
Yep. So just, so I'm not answering the question?
Yeah.
What impact would that have on the neighboring wells?
Well, one, we will commit to, because we cannot get our permit without making sure that we don't have any impact on those wells, but that would have, just by the calculation, less of an impact than if we were to put, say, a single-family home.
So you're going to disable the other well that's there?
If we can repurpose it, refrack it, re-drill it, we would like to explore that option, but my guess is, within the proximity of that septic system, we can move that well and maximize distances to that.
The board, you've shown on your slides over here that you were going to put something over the top of that, the way it looked.
Yeah, so this well location, this is just the existing location. Sorry, thanks, Dan. That's the existing well location. Our first position is going to be to try to explore repurposing that, but my experience will tell me that we're going to have to drill a well further away to meet some setback distances to that septic system.
Because it's a public water supply?
Correct. Correct.
And the other thing I ask in regards to the water, it's being submersed into a tank, then of course to a leach field?
Yeah, so it, conventionally now, it is a typical septic tank, two-compartment that goes into a D-box. We've got some record information on the existing septic system, typical stone and pipe system. We'll keep that unless the field gets so large, you know, there's other ways, such as pretreatment, to sort of reduce the size of that field, but yeah, it's going to be a conventional type system.
Out of curiosity, what do you think the plants will drink in a day?
That hydroponic system, that is reused, why don't you explain it better than I can?
So we actually handwater now, and we have a lot of small plants, mid-small plants. A lot of the plants are about this big typically, so those plants could drink about 250 milliliters every other day. So we don't water them every day.
Every day, right.
Yeah, it's like every other day, every other day and a half.
Our existing facility is in Warwick, Rhode Island, similar operation. How many square feet about?
That's 4,800 square feet, so it's smaller. So that's how I based my calculation of water usage, based on what we use at our current facility in Rhode Island.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question, a few. The existing building doesn't meet the setbacks in the front, but it's been there more than 10 years, going.
Yeah, well, if they're not changing the structure itself on the outside, then they wouldn't be.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Pre-existing non-conforming, right. Yep, that's what I thought, I just wanted to.
Like you said, he's tearing off the front vestibule on that, and they're taking out the shed in the back on that, so if anything, they're going to have more land area around the building.
Okay, and you did say you're going to put a small addition on the back?
No, we were.
The entranceway.
Oh, we were going to just, we wanted to just have in that easternmost corner, that's that delivery entranceway, that security area.
Okay, but nothing in the back where all the equipment is now?
Just the back wall, he's going to put an entrance.
No, I know that, I understand that, but in the back of the building where all the equipment is, where you said there's a fence company there, I thought you said you're going to put an addition on the back.
No, the addition is going to be, in terms of the back, that's the back there, that shed's going to be removed. We just wanted to put.
Oh, another doorway?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought it was an addition.
That addition he's talking about is blocks with crusses on the tops of the salt shed.
Okay, any other members have questions for the applicant?
I do not.
I do have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Odor control.
Absolutely, fair question.
It's a big problem on Gilboa Street. Every time I go down there, I want to go to Dunkin' Donuts, but.
I've noticed that. I drove by Gilboa numerous times, and I'm familiar with the odor. The facility we have in Warwick right now, I don't have any issues with odor. We use a very simple negative air concept. We scrub all the air with carbon filtration system. We have no issue. We have regulators come to our facility a handful of times a year. They actually make jokes in the parking lot that they can't smell anything. Like, show your own marijuana here?
Yeah, because of what you know is on Gilboa Street, that's why I bring it up.
Well, that's ridiculous.
Again, being close to residential properties.
Yeah, but we want to be good neighbors and good community corporate citizens, so that's not acceptable to have odor leaching out of the building to the, you know, grandma across the street or some young family of kids next door. That's not exciting.
Okay. All right. Can I open it up to the audience? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions for the applicant? All right. Okay, if you could just, I just need your name and address so we can, the minute taken.
My name is Virginia Howe.
Okay.
I live at 116 Davis, directly across the street.
Hi, Virginia.
Hello. So first of all, places that are growing marijuana right now in town, if you drive by, you can smell it.
I agree.
So that's a worry problem for me. I have some health issues that it would be totally unacceptable for me to smell marijuana. Totally unacceptable. So that's my number one concern. Number two, you're talking about water, like you've got water coming, you know, from the gods, we're not having water from the gods. And I know other places where they grow, and they're having a lot of trouble getting enough water. So it sounds more like pie in the sky than reality to me. And by the way, we all understand that marijuana is the last gold rush, so there's lots of money, but that doesn't make it okay for you guys to ruin my well, which is a potential, obviously, or to ruin my health. So I have a lot of very serious concerns, and I would like you to take that into consideration.
Okay.
I've lived in this town for 60 years, and I'm not happy about this. I have no problem with marijuana. Grow it anywhere you want, but please don't grow it across the street. And you're not talking about anything outside, correct?
That's right.
Home, in the building.
Yes.
But I strenuously object to what you're doing.
We will be good neighbors.
Yeah. Well, the last conversation I had with people, and I don't know who were there, I was told that you would not be drilling a well, that the well you had would be sufficient. And if you go back and find that film.
That's true. I did say that. At that time.
And now that's changed. So everything is subject to change.
I was not aware that we needed a public well. I did not know that.
Okay. Anybody else has any questions? Okay. All right. Would the board like to move from this?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombarra, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Would the board like to move to a decision tonight?
We've just got one question.
Sure.
How much land is there in the back there for more development, not of this facility, but other businesses?
Yeah, I think it's on the.
Outside of this plot of land?
Yeah.
Or on that plot?
No, on the outside, in the back.
I'm not sure, but I know that you have, they're going to be somewhat limited to things. You've got some wetlands back there, and you also have the pipeline that goes, the gas pipeline that goes back there, so you're going to be limited as to how much you could actually develop. You could do some of it, but you're going to be limited.
Yeah, there is a plot plan that shows the abutting lot, which is owned by Riddlebrook LLC or something. And there are two businesses next door, as you know, next door to them, to the right of them.
Yeah, the machine shop, Camelot Machine Shop.
Machine shop that's there.
Mostly wetlands.
Quite a bit of land in the back there.
Quite a bit of it. It's a huge hole. I don't know what it worked up on, going, must have mined out all the dirt, but it was a huge hole there last time, wasn't it? They have that little scale house. But in any event, they have it right, and there's an access point that abuts this property that goes into that back section. It would be totally separate.
Right off of 16.
Right between Camelot and 116 Davis Street, there's a access point.
Two other buildings next door to it, so. If you go to the website in town of Douglas, and go to the assessors, you can see anything you want to see in Douglas and who owns it, or not particular, or any of it, so.
And actually, what's in front of the board is the special permit because of the lack of area. They have an acre and a half or thereabouts, and required five, so just, Ms. Howe, if, I don't know if you're aware, but they're also in front of the planning board, and I think some of your concerns are more planning board issues than zoning board issues?
Oh, you know, that's true.
You know, we're here just about land area.
Land area, yeah.
And she certainly has some concerns, and I think the planning board would be receptive.
I'm guessing that they don't like to do it all, so obviously there's some reason for me to be here, too.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is anybody to reassure me that if they get into my water or into my well, that somebody's going to hear and do my water?
Well, that's what I'm trying to tell you. I think that the planning board could condition that in their approval, but they're only here in front of us for lack of land. They don't meet the requirement for land, but the site plan review through the planning board deals with everything, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I know we closed the public hearing, but that gentleman that spoke, I think he addressed that, that it's a requirement that you don't, that you have to show that you don't affect the area wells with the public water supply well?
Yeah, I mean.
It is a little unusual, we already closed the public hearing, but I just want to.
Yeah, it's the same charge with drainage, and we're not going to have any negative impact.
I can't hear you at all.
Same charge with, you know, and in terms of this being a public well, while it's going to have extra protection, if we're at 800 gallons a week, you know, that's a couple of days, if that was, say, to be a single-family home.
Correct.
Or other uses that would be allowed. So drying up the well prospectively.
Yeah, no, not to cut you off, it's just, all I wanted to do was just clarify that you were required to show that when you apply for your public water well. We already closed the public hearing, I don't want to be rude to you, but no problem. I'm already getting clear that because I'm overstepping my bounds.
It's not doing any good, though, is it?
No. That's why I turned this way, so I could see that.
So, go ahead.
That's why I brought up a couple of the things that I anticipated that would be a concern as far as odor affecting neighboring wells and stuff like that, but as you stated, I think that that gets covered in the planning board review, of their site plan review.
Right.
And they would condition that and control that, I would think.
Yeah, that's why I suggested it.
This is purely, they're only purely here for an exemption, a relief from the exemption of use. Because they lack the total area. If they had five acres, they wouldn't even be here in front of us.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear and that it's paying attention to us.
Any other?
No. Make a motion to reapprove the Dock Stream LLC. I guess you call it a docket, number is 2021-16, in reference to the map, or I should say the plans that they have on paper that's dated. Well, it came into the town of Douglas on 9/22/21, so I'll go with that number there, and September the 3rd, no, took it on September 23rd, 21st.
You also want to add the project narrative to?
Yeah, the project narrative, that's all that comes with, the proposed marijuana cultivation manufacturing facility, and it's 116 Davis Street.
Okay. And one thing I failed to mention was, we do have correspondence that all of the certified mailings were received back to the town, so everybody's been legally notified.
Second on that?
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Bombarra.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Aye. The special permit is granted unanimously, and good luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to tell them the process?
Yeah, we will get the decision drafted as soon as possible, get it to the town clerk. Typically, it takes a few weeks.
Okay.
But we'll get it to them as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Should we wait till these guys get out?
One more?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, is it 7:30 or?
7:15, so. Yeah, we'll just wait till they pack up. Did everybody see a copy of the decision for Parent and Dolan from last month?
From last month, I haven't read it.
Oh.
I just got it tonight.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right.
I came in early just to pick up my documents.
Yes, Cala Dolan. That public well that they need has tied into having their fire suppression on site. They have to go to the public well to have that fire.
Oh, I see. I'm surprised a building that big didn't have it previously.
Nobody in town has.
Don't be the first thing.
Nobody does? Did you say nobody does?
Very few people in town, very few buildings have sprinklers. Mostly just the schools.
Okay. The next agenda item is, let's see here. Sorry, the next agenda item is a public hearing for Jack and Cindy Goodison, case number 2021-17, 55 Lakeshore Drive. The date of the application is October 13th. The following was posted in the Town Hall and advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it reads as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on November 3rd in the Douglas Municipal Center. 29 Depot Street, Douglas Mast, to hear the following application. Jack and Cindy Goodison is requesting a variance in an rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to the MGL Chapter 48, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 3.4.4 variance required, and Section 9.2.2, property located at 55 Lakeshore Road, Assessors Map 110-39, Parcel 3. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. I do have correspondence that all the certified mailings were received, so every, all the abutters have been legally notified, and the same people will be hearing and voting on the case, Mr. Bombara, Mr. Forget, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and myself. And is the applicant here? Would you like to join us, sir?
Can I ask a question before we get started?
Sure.
Who paid your application?
I did it myself.
Attaboy. We're finally got a complete, accurate application.
I know.
If you could put that on the record, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. The floor's yours, sir.
Like that, John?
Yeah, that was good. That was a good mic.
I didn't realize I was doing any kind of a presentation, but my request is that, I have a summer cottage at Lakeshore Drive, and in an attempt to renovate it, it's a little over 500 square feet. I do have a, an active permit that's temporarily on hold because there was a lot of rot in the camp, and I'm trying to, trying to fix it up. In an attempt to make it year-round, I would like to do an 8x20 shed design addition off the back, which would bring me over into the setback from the road. It would penetrate three and a half feet. So I'm asking for a variance for the three and a half feet.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, I did actually take a ride by today, and it was pretty clear what you were-
It's a challenging property.
Yeah.
Nah, really?
But I'm, I'm stubborn, and I, I wanna see it through. It's gonna be beautiful when I get it done.
I think I was a half a mile away, and my GPS said you have arrived, and I said, "No, I'm not there yet. I don't see the water."
I purchased an additional two-plus acres adjacent to it, so as you approach the property on the left coming into the lake, I have over four acres there now. My long-term goal is I'd like to put a hobby barn, I'm getting ready to retire, I'd like to have a hobby barn, and make the cottage year-round use.
Could I ask our building, so what'd you find so far regarding, so this is the only reason why you stopped it, because you wanted to put the 8x20 on there?
Well, the, the project blew up from what it originally was. So originally, it was to put on what you're seeing as the, the deck and the screen room and the seat, and the four-seasons room in the front.
Sure.
And that was fine, and then, you know, upon inspection, it was to the point where it was basically a pavilion standing there with decks surrounding it.
Yep.
And the request came in for his addition, which becomes not conforming with the setback, so... Until we get some clarity between conservation, making sure that they were all set with everything going on, and zoning, making sure that they would be in agreement with his setback requirements and stuff, it's been, I've been holding it.
Okay.
I, I do have conservation approval now. I've advanced to that point.
Okay, yep. Yeah, I think we spoke about that on the phone. Yeah, so you're 46.5 away from me now, so, you know, it'd be in 50 feet, but, Mr. Chairman, that's all I really got. I don't have a problem with this at all.
The only observation I have is, in the middle of the night, when you want to drink, you're gonna have to walk a lot further to the refrigerator.
Ron, did you have any thoughts on this?
No.
Okay. All right, I, I feel the same way. I went out there today, and I don't think, in this situation, it's not a terribly dense area, and I don't personally think-
You wanna sell some of those rocks?
Yeah.
Have as many as you want. I'll load them.
I'll load them.
All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, actually, I just gotta open up. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this application?
Pretty inviting, Mike.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. My name's Bob Moran. I live at 56 Lakeshore Drive.
Okay.
Across the street. So I'm essentially the only year-round abutter to the property that's involved. There's three cabins in front of the year-round house that I'm in, so ostensibly, I would be the only person impacted visually or, you know, to even see this. And honestly, I have no objection to the proposal. You know, I believe the improvement will benefit the neighborhood and, and hopefully the town a little bit more taxes. I just wanted on record that the one neighbor who would be affected has no objection to the proposal, so I would encourage your approval.
So noted. Thank you, sir.
I'm just happy to get somebody to talk to in the world.
He's a drinking buddy.
Yeah, he's not here in the world.
Well, you could say he was gonna put up a hobby shop, eh?
Yeah, hobby shop.
I was working out. I'm, I'm one year into the, the community, one year into Douglas, too.
I see.
Happy to get to know how things work and play by the rules. I have a bill in front of the cannon.
Must be tough, huh? Anyway, Mike.
Motion to close the public hearing. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing?
Seconded by-
Seconded by-
Oh, seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Go ahead, Mike. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I got one more question. So you, you have plans in there? Is that exactly?
Actually, you know what? With public hearing, we just closed it.
No, he jumped in after.
No. What, so what's your question?
No, no, about the, I saw the colorful plans over here.
You can have those.
Okay, all right, never mind. Let's move forward. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the dockets over here.
Let's go 2021-17.
What'd you say, 202?
2021-17.
202.
2021.
Yeah.
2021-17.
Make a motion to approve the variance for 2021-17. Reference the plan submitted, stamped in by the town clerk, dated October 13, 2021, which is showing a site plan as well as his building plan with his proposed addition.
All right. And should we just state that the variance would be granted, and the addition would be no closer than 46.5 feet? Just, just for the num, just for the numbers, that way it's in there?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, and good luck with your addition.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Paperwork done by 2025.
Yeah, it typically takes a few weeks.
I told him be a couple months to get his permit.
Wait for your call.
Wait for your call. Been waiting a long time.
I just wanted to know if you did the, the survey by line of sight, or if you traveled that gully down?
Oh, that gully down there?
Probably 80 feet away, if you went by ground.
No, true. That's true.
All right. Also, in our packets, there was a page with our meeting dates for 2022.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody had a chance to review it, and if everybody's good with it.
No, I still like the idea of the first Wednesday of the month. Getting back to the normal, that we had it for the last 10 years.
Which is what this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have it. Some refrigerators are already-
Being that we're only four members, I don't know if anybody's planning to be out of town July 6th. It's a common week for people to be away, and seeing we're at bare minimum at the moment, four members, well, four regular members.
How are we doing? Skyping? I mean, what do you call it?
Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was concerned, I don't know if this date works for everybody, but-
You say January 6th, okay.
No, it's July 6th, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, July 6th?
Yeah, July 6th.
Yeah, okay. That's too far off for me to even say.
Okay, well-
Yeah.
All right. Jen put together some, some middle deadlines and advertising dates. She did a nice job.
Changed it, yeah.
Did a good job with it.
Yep.
So, if nobody has a problem with the proposed meeting schedule for 2022, we just need-
Motion to accept.
Okay, thank you. A motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to accept our 2022 hearing schedule. Do we have a second?
Ron, you go ahead and second it. You second it. Okay, I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the hearing schedule is approved as drafted.
So, Mr. Chairman, so we're gonna get this, we're gonna do these minutes for January 6th, next month?
Yeah, this, we'll be here till-
January 6th. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go through and try to correct some of this stuff, and then I'm gonna scan it in, send it over to, uh-
I thought we already did that.
No, we didn't.
No.
No.
Oh.
So I'm gonna try to do it for it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I know, like, three, three months ago, we were both, all of us were together, and different things were said.
Yeah, this one's critical.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one has some legal-
No, I understand the ramifications, but what I said, we just went, I thought we just went through it like three months ago, and we went through the whole thing, page by page, and I may change this, he may change this, you may change this.
You got notes to it?
No. I'm away, 'cause I thought it was all done.
Yeah, it wasn't all done, so, I'll do that, and I'll send it to Dan, and then, we'll, hopefully, we'll have this corrected for next meeting.
Yeah. And there's also a few other months in here, 'cause we were-
Yeah.
-without a minute taker for quite some time, so, so why don't we plan on, I'll put it on our agenda for first thing next month, so we can get it done.
What, on these?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if everybody could take them with them.
Yep.
Yes, exactly.
Get through it.
Yep. All right. And then we had the decision for Robert Parent and Carol Dolan. I don't know if everybody got a copy of it, if you had a chance to review it. I do have the originals here. If, if everybody's good with it, we can sign it.
You can give it to me. I've already read that one. You got a second, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, John.
You need it, then I'm signed.
Oh, yeah, if you're, if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. I, I picked up my package this past Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, I wish they all came in like this.
I know. I thought, I thought he hired somebody to do it.
I had to acknowledge it.
We don't see that very often.
A completed application. Well, it must've been nice for you to see. All the information there, you're not searching. I like that name. Which is setback, not applicable. And you're here for what? Just one. Jen?
Chairman, I can give you a review on North Brown if you'd like.
Oh, I was just gonna ask you. Thank you.
So I spoke with Neil Reivicky this past week, a couple of times, with regards to getting some things finished up up there with those rain gardens and retention ponds in the back, and the road work for the C road going up through the middle. C road work, they are, they awarded a contract today for the gravel, so he said by the end of next week, they'll be in the process of graveling that road.
Okay.
I did send back an email requesting the information as to who it was they awarded it to. I haven't gotten any information back on that.
Okay.
With regards to the rain gardens and the retention pond, there's one final retention pond on Phase 2 that covers approximately from Unit 40 up to the end. That retention pond is not complete, will not be completed until all seeding is done and grading done around those final units he's finishing, because it'll just end up getting polluted with siltation and stuff going in there. He did talk with Leonard Engineering, who does our reviews up there, and they were in agreement with that, to wait until that was done.
Okay.
I asked him with regards to the sidewalks, what he was, you know, proposing, and he said, before the end of the year, he, basically what he told me is, before the end of the year, that, that section will be completed, short of a final coat on the asphalt.
Mm-hmm. That would be good.
Yeah. So, I keep telling him, don't look for any building permits on Route C until we get binder coat down on that, and he says, well, he's, he's working on it to do the best they can.
Okay. All right. But I assume somebody's gonna test that gravel, eh?
I told him it's gonna be tested. I believe Leonard's gonna be going up there-
Okay, yeah, I think-
-to do the testing. I told him it's also gonna be tested under the sidewalks. I said, yeah, so just dig it out and pave sidewalks, and it's probably good.
Right.
Couple areas that have washouts, again, it's that, that little tail road that goes into the cistern area. He was having a problem with the washout straight off with the outlet pipe there. He's resolved that, now he's gotta wash out to the side. So I said, you might wanna look into some way to either, I says, you know, with the amount of time and effort you've put into it, maybe you put a catch base, and at the end of that little turnout road, swale it down in, so it actually goes through a catch base, and then they'll stop doing the washout.
Mm-hmm.
He couldn't issue know all this.
What do you think?
I'm sorry, I'll be ready for the next one. The, I didn't pay 100% attention. Did you talk about the water pipe and that cross-section of it?
No, I, I didn't. So the crossover pipe, where the elevation confusion was down at the intersection of Road B and C.
I'm gonna made the pipe that went up and over.
Right.
That's what I'm asking. So they did, they did all the tie-in, they did all the testing, and ironically enough, the problem they had was a leak on the vacuum test on that over pass. So they had to go back through and redo it. My understanding is it has been redone. Leonard witnessed it, but still waiting for water, and I talked with Bob Sullivan today. He's waiting to hear from them to go in and do the testing.
Okay.
So, but Ron, what we're talking about is when they, up at that 40B project, the water line, the sewer line ended up at the same elevation, so they went-
Where?
Up and over it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it's been a, a problem for a year and a half, two years now.
Oh, yeah. They're supposed to be 10 feet apart.
Yeah.
One crosses, imagine, yeah.
Water, water pipe was supposed to be five feet in the ground, and because they did this little crazy hook to the pipe, they didn't have the protection, then there was an argument about insulation, and so the thing stayed open forever, because there was no water in it.
So how are they gonna, how are they gonna fix it?
So they did the, the loop over, they've repaired the leak that they had, they've tested it with the town's engineer. Now, Bob Sullivan from Water is waiting to hear from them, because he wants to witness the test before he's gonna get the approval on it for them to backfill it.
Then weren't they gonna insulate somehow, insulate that?
So, it's a different fight now. They did have, I believe it was a ductile iron going up and over, and it's not anymore. They did have, I believe it was a ductile iron going up and over, and it's not anymore. They actually requested and received approval to change the pipe to, it appears to be a PVC-type pipe. I'm not, I'm not familiar with what it, I'd have to talk to Bob to get the terminology of what it is. But they did change the pipe, and that's going across. Before they bury it, it is supposed to be wrapped, insulated, and then buried.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be insulated, because it's.
How close is it to the surface now?
I think about three feet.
Well, it'll land up about four feet.
Yeah.
About four feet, yeah. It's in an area that they can do some grade changes right there. There's no more duplexes going right in that area, so, you know, worst case, if they did need ground cover, I think they have enough clearance from edge of pavement and surrounding ground that if they needed to mound it to get adequate coverage, they could do that.
Have there been any occupancies of late?
So I received in from them the list of the new affordables. The new affordable rate went from 198 to 248 and some change.
Yep.
They've got 19 units, they put in all 19 units of affordable into the lottery at the same time, and establishing a first come, first served. I just spoke with, I want to say his name, Bill Cashman, first name could be wrong, but his last name is Cashman. He did the paperwork for the new affordables. He had submitted it to the town to get posted on the website. The old affordable was still on the website, along with the new affordable rates and everything. So I got with, I sent Lisa Freeman an email to have that old one taken off the website, so it's just a newer one on there. But he says that the response has not been good for people coming in on the affordable.
Be aware of the fact of their ratio, that 25%.
Right now, they can, they can finish that Phase 2 and be under their ratio. They can't go, so the first two foundations that I've given permits for, one of them isn't affordable on that. But going forward, until they finish selling the affordables on this side, I don't know that they can continue up. I have to do the numbers again.
But it's not just built, it's sold.
Sold, yes.
Sold.
All the units on Phase 1 and 2 are sold, with the exception of, I believe you said.
No, but I mean, when they get into the third phase, you got to watch what they're doing, because they got a little lax then at the very beginning. We had a problem with that.
Right.
We did.
I believe right now, they're supposed to be at six, they have to be at 16 before they get into this next phase. Yeah, because I believe that's 16 units. They get 35 total affordables up there. I believe it's 16 have to be sold before they move up on this next phase, by the numbers. Yeah, that is one thing I'm watching as permits come in and go out.
Yeah, the concern was that they could potentially turn into rentals or something like.
That's according to who makes that perimeter.
That was set up in the guidelines, 2009, the company.
2009. When he started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Long time ago.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a long time.
Yeah. I'm still pushing in a polite way to try and get them to start seriously thinking about doing that last road section. I'd like to see the site fully developed on the roadways to binders.
That's a great idea, actually.
I just think it's a, it's a better situation. They've got too much open ground up there. They've been doing a pretty good job of getting all of the remedial fills out of there, definitely stockpiled. They've gotten them down to decent-sized piles at this point. They're still taking stuff out of there, which is fine. And I keep telling them, you know, if you're not going to touch it in a two-week period, you've got to protect it. So they've gone to the point of putting tarps over some of it. The loom has reseated itself.
Right.
Luckily for them, so that's pretty well protected. They do have piles of stone and debris from sifting. They said that they have somebody who's coming in, and it's going to crush all that.
Yep. Good, good.
Well, thank you for your effort.
Yeah.
Apparently, you're doing something right, because we haven't had a bunch of drama sessions in here in quite some time, so.
Not that we don't miss it. That's why I asked about the sales. I'm sure we'll see it at some point.
No, I just want to acknowledge that. It's paying off. Yeah, having him here all the time, yeah. Not that I'm trying to toot you on, Ken, but you being here and you going up there all the time. They were taking advantage of the fact that there was nobody in the store. Exactly. Exactly true. We just didn't know we were going to end up with a stockpile like that.
Yep.
Just drop your diamond in the bar, kiss you welcome.
No, we don't have any other agenda items.
We'll do all the minutes next month, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
We could second that one, right?
Yeah.
We have a motion for Mr. Bumbara, and seconded by Mr. Forget, to adjourn.